Ms. Whitby, if you please, call the roll.
Gibson.
President.
Yildin.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Barry.
Here.
Bestel.
President.
Height.
Here.
Witcher's absent, Aquorum is present.
Thank you. Ms. Whitby, can I ask that we stand for the prayer and pledge to be led by Alderman Height?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight in order to handle the affairs of this city. We're thankful for your presence here in this chamber with us. Lord, we pray for our military tonight, we pray for those who have sacrificed themselves for our freedoms, and we pray for their families. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your presence with our military overseas. Protect our military and return them safely home as soon as possible, and we pray for peace. We pray for a quick resolution to the war in Iraq. Lord, we pray that our thoughts, our words, and our actions tonight will be pleasing in your sight. Forgive us of our many sins, it's through Jesus Christ our Savior, I pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move, second?
Motion made, second, in defense of the previous meeting, be approved and submitted. And the special.
Was there not a special call?
Yeah, there was a special call, and the special call be approved and submitted on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin. Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
I have a motion on the communications.
So move.
There a second?
Second.
On any council member, which pull anyone. On the motion, I'm sorry.
Number one?
Yep. Yes, we want to...
We want to vote on that.
Where's our lounge, I want to... What is that?
It's number one.
Yeah.
Number one?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Number one, yeah.
Alright, number one, on two, three, seven, on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Number one, by title, or would you like it read?
Read it, uh... Read it, please.
You don't, just read what the substance of it is.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, this is a memorandum to the council members, it's regarding an application by Ann Lee Gray for a new retail beer on-premise license for the Ann Lounge at 4611 East Broadway.
Will you accept and file?
Motion made, second, at discussion.
I'd like, I'd like to have people speak on this because I know it's quite concerned with some of the neighbors, especially the residential right next door and the police station on the other side. And we were kind of all pleased out there when we got the last tenant out. So I was hoping that the council might consider, but I'd like, I'd like to make a motion, but I'd like to allow those people...
You don't need to make a motion, we'll permit them. If anyone is here that wants to comment on this item of communication concerning a new retail beer permit for Ann Lee Gray Ann Lounge at 4611 East Broadway, come to the microphone, please.
My name is Lee Campbell, and I live right next door to it. And I think it is a hazard to everybody that goes up and down Broadway and Lynch Drive. And I had trouble all the time when those others were over there. I even came home one night, and I couldn't even get in my driveway, I had to call the police over there to get people out of my driveway so I could get in my house. There's only about maybe fifteen or twenty parking places. And they're gonna be parking everywhere. It ain't gonna be nothing but a hazard to everybody. That's all that place has ever been. And I would like to see it not open.
Alderman Thomas?
I think one of the things that she'd mentioned to me, that they won't allow, I think, dancing and music, that'll be...
They're supposed to be having dancing and music there also.
And at her age, she was concerned about the noise there having been...
I also live right next door to it.
How long has it been since there's been a place there, or activity there?
Probably maybe a month, month and a half. But it hadn't had any business except about three or four cars for the last year over there. Very seldom they'd have very many people over there, not very many. Once in awhile they would, but not very often.
And they finally closed that one now?
They finally closed it.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Bobby Taylor, and I would like to see this place stay closed. It's, I don't know, it seems like the last three or four times that the alcohol board has been involved in North Little Rock, it's been the senior citizen center, it's opened up down there at a special time, and now the innocent ballparks. And I have heard grown people, I've heard the policemen, talk about drugs and alcohol around our small kids and stuff like that. And I think it's a crying shame, I hadn't had the opportunity to tell you all, but I think it's a crying shame that ballparks has turned over to allowing alcohol to be sold for them small kids are gonna be. I don't care if it's just on the Fourth of July weekend, it's still a disgrace to the human race. And I don't care who knows it, in this place at 4611 Broadway, I'd like to see it stay closed. Thank you.
There's a motion made, accept and file.
There's a, I guess there, on the comments by officials, there's a place in there to file an objection. And I think probably Ms. Robinson and Mr. Thomas would like to file an objection.
I would like to make a motion.
Would you have that there with a yes in there, and then explain why? And I would obviously ask one of those two if they would fill that out, process it through the city attorney so that we, tonight, so that we can get this to the ABC board.
Okay.
And I didn't make the motion, that's up to...
But I wanted to make a motion that we go on record as opposing that, and would you like this read what we want to say? I'll have the city attorney help us prepare that.
You want to do that now, or you want to...
I guess he'd like some time, we can do, however you want to do it.
Okay, alright, let's just, let's just put a hold on that, whenever y'all ready, let me know.
Okay.
So we'll just hold that in advance, and let me, let me, okay, well, let's do it this way. Let's, I've got a special call, and let me just go ahead and see if there's anyone here that wants to talk about curbside recycling. So I'm gonna bang the gavel and open up the public hearing on curbside recycling. If you want to come to the microphone, the microphone's open.
My name is Linda Stewart, and I recycle on my own about every ten days, whether it's into my schedule or not. And I would love to have curbside recycling.
And pay a dollar seventy-five?
Five, whatever it is.
Okay.
And could I bring up one other thing?
Sure.
When the snow and ice were on the roads, there was a man in North Little Rock that had a heart attack, and a 10,000-pound ambulance could not get him to Baptist Health Hospital up there on Spring Hill Drive. So they had to take him to Baptist in Little Rock, which put him under the care of people that were not his normal doctors. And I just think that ought to be looked at.
We'll sure do that.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, I'm back one more time. This curb recycling, I brought that up to the crime watch, last crime watch, and they said that if people wanted recycling, they didn't feel like keeping up with this container that they're gonna bring, they've already got all they want to drag to the front and drag back behind the house, and they said if, I told them it was gonna be a dollar seventy-five cents, and they said, "Well, it's a dollar seventy-five cents now, and this, North Little Rock has nothing to do with this, this is strictly waste management." And they said, "Well, we've heard stuff like that before." And when they get their foot in the door and they get this on our utility bill, then it's never gonna be stopped. And you can just keep adding and adding and adding, and soon the wagon gets loaded. And what I'm talking about, some of these elderly people, that a dollar seventy-five cents may not seem much to a working person, but a person that's on a fixed income, a dollar here and a dollar there, they get to where sometimes they don't have the food, they don't have medicine that they need on account of the food, they have to do without some of their food in order to have their medicine. So if waste management wants to put these recycle deals, let them figure out a way to pay the bill. Thank you.
Mayor Hayes and council members, it's good to be able to stand here at this podium one more time within the past two years. And my reason for trying to be here tonight is, would you please explain this curbside service? Do that entail those big green containers?
No ma'am, what this is, is, and I know, I sure know you, but why don't you state your name so everybody else knows?
Okay, I'm La Di Keener.
What this is, is for a dollar seventy-five cents a month, a company called Waste Management has said that they will come by once a week and pick up a container that they give to each household in the city. And we put all of our recyclable materials into that container and take it out to curb, and they will carry the materials in there away so that we can recycle that rather than put that in the landfill.
What about this, what about the sanitation department?
That won't change.
That won't change. Well, from, for me, and I think I speak for those in mid-city, we just don't want recycling. I'm not able now to really do anything hardly, and I don't, for me, and for the ones that I talk to, we don't want it. If it means that I have to get something to say that they don't want it, I will do that. But we don't want it in mid-city, and I would like to say, if I may, Mayor Hayes, while I stand here, I have a hardship, something, I have to use Lank Now for my health services, and they have to use the alley back of my house. And I would appreciate it if you'll have my alderman look at it for me. It's a low place there that holds water when it rains, and they said they are not supposed to back out into the street, but for my health and health sake, they do. And I would appreciate if you would see if you could get me some gravel in that low place, and I thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Ward, did you hear the words, Mr. Ward?
Thank you.
Did you hear, visit with this lady unless you heard that?
Why don't you, just go visit with her?
We don't like to shout across the room.
(laughing).
Yes ma'am?
Mayor Hayes and council members, I'm Janice Keener, and I live at a different address. But as far as the Waste Management is concerned, at this particular time, I recycle, and I try to encourage my neighbors to do the same thing, and even help with, because I have senior citizens in my neighborhood. And at this particular time, I don't see a need for the dollar seventy-five cents either, in the future maybe, but right now, I think that we could pass on that, okay?
Thank you. Microphone's open.
Hi, my name is Melody Wilford, I live in the Park Hill area. And I've lived here, came back from California and there, we had curbside recycling, and I'd like to see it back. We recycle personally, I mean, I have to load it up and take it down, I've got my little things and everything. But I don't think it's right for us to put off on the landfills, our landfills are getting fuller and fuller. It may not be a need yet, but why should we wait for our grandchildren to have to have that need? Let's take care of it now and not wait until it gets to be a problem. So I'm for it, a dollar seventy-five, I talked to a lot of people, and everyone I've talked to is for it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, I'm James Ard, I'm for recycling. I do remember, and I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't talk to you first before I say this, as you know, I come up sometimes and approach you with something...
You're perfectly welcome, come up whenever you want.
But I don't feel we should have to pay the dollar seventy-five, I think we should have it, but I think it should be part of the one cent tax we voted for. And as a lot of people feel that way, they want me to do a petition, but I didn't really have time to do it. But if we need to, to prove the point, I'm more than happy to do it. We're for it, but we'd like the city to take care of it as part of the garbage collection. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Mayor, council members. I'm Rusty Wirick, I live in the Park Hill area, and I definitely support recycling personally and for the city. I think that a dollar seventy-five a month calculates to less than $24 a year, that's the visit of a family to McDonald's one time. That's less than one month's cable bill. I think that in terms of what we want to do with our state, I don't think we need to be filling up our land with landfills. I think that we should be recycling this into new and useful products, and I think it makes sense for the long term. Thank you.
Microphone's still open. Going once, going twice, now what we're gonna do is adjourn, no, recess this public hearing until the next council meeting. And let me, let me clarify something that I said last time, you know, when it came to money that we might save vis-a-vis recycling, you know, if we can devise a method as to what that money might be, you know, I said no to Alderman Thomas's question. Let me, let me say that I changed my mind, and that if we calculate what we save at the end of the year, and we choose to do this, I certainly would support whatever that savings is being applied to the reduction of whatever that recycling amount might be. My position is not for the city to make any money on this if we choose to do it, but at the same sense, you know, I don't feel that we can afford, in response to Mr. Ard at this point, to assume that responsibility. You know, we're probably one of the few, if not only, city in the state that does not charge on sanitation. And we made that commitment when this was not a part of that responsibility, and I know times are tight. So I certainly would not be able to support that, Mr. Ard. But I would be able to support us figuring whatever we might save in terms of avoidance to the landfill and applying that to a reduction in cost. I don't, certainly don't feel that the city ought to make anything on that. So Alderman Thomas, let me revise my answer to what you said last week, and I would be very willing to support a method that would apply whatever those costs are if this commission, if this council decided to do that. With that, we'll recess the public hearing to the next council meeting. And now, I'd like to take just a moment and ask if Sergeant Ball and Brad Vick and Craig Hicks would come up to the podium up there. One of the things that sometimes we have a tendency to overlook, and while, you know, many acts of heroism are going on over in Iraq right now, I think we're all, sometimes aren't aware of acts of heroism that take place right in our own front yard. And on February the seventeenth of this year, I know that Officer Ball was driving on 440, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and all of a sudden saw several vehicles off to the right, and pulled off to the right and found, which one is Brad Vick? Found Brad Vick and Craig Hicks looking down off of the roadway, and a vehicle had apparently lost control and gone down into the water and overturned, and the three, I believe, if I'm reciting it right, went down. A gentleman was trapped there, I think we all know in February, I don't think any of us exactly remember that day, but it was in all likelihood pretty nippy. And I will give each of you a chance to share a comment if you would, but the comment that I'd like to make is, you know, notwithstanding their own personal safety and certainly the weather conditions, all three went into the water. And an individual, a fellow by the name of Alan Hawley of Heaver Springs, was trapped in there and went in there and freed Mr. Hawley, were able to get him out of the vehicle, up to where Mims was there waiting to help transport Mr. Hawley, and unfortunately, several days later, Mr. Hawley passed away. But it certainly wasn't due to the extraordinary feat and heroism of these three individuals. So, you know, I just wanted to take a moment upon learning of this and indicate to all three of them, Sergeant Dennis Ball, and I'd like to present each of you a plaque in reflection and remembrance and appreciation of what, you know, this community feels for your act of unselfishness and going to the rescue of another and the lengths that you went through to do that. And I've got a similar plaque for Brad Vick and Craig Hicks. So I'll just read this and then pass it out to the three of you. Presented to Dennis Ball, Brad Vick, and Craig Hicks in recognition and appreciation for your unselfish and heroic actions on February seventeen, two thousand and three, in North Little Rock. Mayor Patrick Hayes, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and three. There you go. Sergeant? Brandon? (applause). We appreciate it, thanks again. We got a special call?
Yes, sir. Stated March twenty-first, two thousand and three, honorable members of the city council, this is to advise that we have called a special council meeting of the North Little Rock City Council for 7:05 PM, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and three, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. Number one, an ordinance rezoning certain property located at 501 North Vine in the city of North Little Rock from I-1 to I-2 zone by amending ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Number two, an ordinance allowing a special use for storage of contractor's equipment in a C-3 zone for certain real property located at 4210 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Number three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Polanski County Regional Solid Waste Management District and Waste Management of Arkansas Incorporated for Residential Recycling, Curbside Pickup Services, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Number four, a resolution asking our congressional delegation to support increased funding for public transportation and for other purposes. And number five, a resolution supporting the city council partnering with the North Little Rock School District to renovate and improve the track and football field at the North Little Rock High School West Campus, requesting the mayor and director of finance to present a plan to finance said renovation and improvement for other purposes, respectfully submitted, Mayor Patrick H. Hayes, and this is signed by all eight council members.
Would you indicate whether I have number one, I believe, I know the Alderman Thomas's name on that, would you like that read, Alderman Thomas?
Yes.
Alright.
This is an ordinance rezoning certain property located at 501 North Vine in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I-1 to I-2 zone by amending ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
I'd like to move that the rules be suspended and placed on the second reading.
On the motion?
Is there a second?
We have to have a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second. On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
This is an ordinance rezoning certain property located at 501 North Vine in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I-1 to I-2 zone by amending ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
And I'd like to again move that the rules be suspended and placed on a third reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Ms. Whitby, if you would, this is just a matter of procedure, if in the future we have these, normally we don't have that many, and it looks like we went kind of crazy this time. So if you would, on your transmittal letter, just indicate the sponsor on there also.
Yes, sir.
On the one, two, three, four on the letter.
Yes, sir, I'll get Mr. Susky to help me with that, he sends the letters out.
I'll send that letter out, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Susky, then, would you tell me, oh, I see, excuse me, I even see where I signed it.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Kind of a messy signature, too.
Yeah, messy signature. Help me remember this, when I send it out, to put who the sponsor is.
Yes, sir.
And I believe Alderman Thomas, what's your pleasure on the second one?
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance allowing a special use for storage of contractor's equipment in a C-3 zone for certain real property located at 4210 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
And I'd like to again move that those rules be suspended and placed on the second reading.
On the motion, oh, is there a second? On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
This is an ordinance allowing a special use for storage of contractor's equipment in a C-3 zone for certain real property located at 4210 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
Alright, now, we're in discussion, Ms. Robinson.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Vols, if at all possible, some questions concerning this...
Sure. Vols?
Yes.
Mr. Vols, this particular, the property right now, is it Zone C-3?
Yes.
Which is what, clean commercial?
Right.
Okay, my next question is, is contractor's equipment and box trailers an industrial use?
Yes, that's pretty much an industrial category classification.
Okay, my next question is, will it have a stabilizing effect on the properties surrounding it?
That's fairly hard to say, they've agreed to certain buffering, but it will make it more industrial there on Broadway.
It will. The buffering, what have they agreed to do?
Well, they've agreed to an eight-foot fence on the back, and we have a landscape plan that I've prepared. I'm not, I want to make sure that they're in agreement with us with everything there. I don't know if they're here, if you are okay with that. Okay, so they're gonna have street trees along both streets and an eight-foot fence, which I think we're looking at Ginkgos on the sides where there are no power lines and red buds below the power lines.
Okay, but it's still an industrial use?
Yes, it's a large bulldozer-type equipment, things that people can rent for fairly heavy use.
Okay, and if this passes the city council tonight, I think that they're on the agenda on the twenty-seventh to have a, what, front yard fence?
That's to the Board of Adjustment, to allow them to place the fence...
To the front of the property, on Broadway.
Correct.
For years, my comments are, for years, we've been talking about cleaning up East Broadway and making a difference down East Broadway. In my opinion, since this is a C-3, it's across the street from Harvest Food, you got Twin City Bank next door, and you got some other establishments there, to me, in my opinion, allowing an industrial use in a C-3 zone is not cleaning up the area. And we've talked about that for years, and I cannot go along with it. You could add trees, and you can add a fence, and a fancy fence, but it's still an industrial use. And I've got issues with it. Does the applicant live in the area?
I don't know, they're here, though.
Do you live in the area, sir?
Please come to the microphone if you don't mind. Could you introduce yourself, please, if you don't mind, Alderman Robinson, asking questions?
My name is Bruce Humm, with Humm's Hardware and Rental. I do not live in the area, I've been in business at that location since nineteen sixty-eight.
Uh-huh, but you do not live in the area?
No, ma'am. But if you remember what was there beforehand, where Gabby's Market was there, there was a dilapidated building with apartments underneath it, sitting almost on top of Broadway. I think of anything that we have done, we've made an improvement to the property there instead of downgrading it.
Sir, my concern is that it is an industrial use in a C-3 zone. That is my concern. I have a problem with that because C-3 is clean commercial.
on top of Broadway. I think of anything that we have done, we've made an improvement to the property there instead of downgrading it.
Sir, my concern is that it is an industrial use in a C-3 zone. That is my concern. I have a problem with that because C-3 is clean commercial. And the residents out there, like I said, for years have been saying, we need to clean up East Broadway. We need to stop allowing certain things to come into East Broadway.
I have letters from the property owners next to us. Twin City Bank has, or they're definitely for what we're doing. They have given me a letter saying they approve of what we're doing. The residential area behind us, I've talked to those people. They're for what we're doing. You know, we're by no means trying to degrade Broadway, and I plan on doing things the way the city wants it done. And if anything, you know, it's gonna be nice. It's not gonna be degrading Broadway at all. And a matter of fact, up and down Broadway, there are a whole lot of places that look a whole lot worse than what we have had there, and ours is gonna be nice.
Just a second. Mr. Voels, let me ask you a couple of questions. What was the vote on the planning commission?
I believe it was unanimous. There may have been one.
Seven.
Seven, one?
Seven, one.
Okay. And in terms of the future, I know we're not going by this area at this point with the improvements to the, you know, to East Broadway. It'll start construction in '05. In terms of any possible improvements to East Broadway as we work our way, which I'm afraid will be in some distant future, will this have any right-of-way problems?
They'll be coming in with plat, I believe, right?
Correct.
On the property, and we can require a dedication of right-of-way. But on this stretch, I don't think we're asking for the road to be widened, because they're gonna do an overlay this year, and it'll be some time before that phase is underway.
I have one final question for Mr. Voels. If we allow this, are we setting a precedent?
Well, I imagine y'all have already set that precedent, but there's a mixed use along Broadway, and it's fairly heavy. This is in the middle of Rose City, and you're allowing contractor equip, you would be allowing contractor equipment there on East Broadway.
I have no further questions.
Alderman Thomas?
You are going to put this fence along the front to it, say ornamental fence. Is that true?
Yes, it'd be a six-foot wrought iron ornamental fence that can be seen through.
And one of the things, I guess, I live on the street behind. I live on Haywood, and I do remember, as you mentioned, the old store there, the old grocery store and those dilapidated buildings. And I think, as you mentioned, most of the people there would rather see what you're doing than what was there before, of course.
From the comments I've gotten from the people, they're very happy with what we've done.
Alderman Gibson?
Mr. Tom, it's, we have a similar facility right in the heart of Park Hill. It isn't what the facility is, it's what the facility becomes. If you keep it neat and everything, it won't look like a construction equipment site. If you keep it junky, it's gonna look like one in a hurry. I encourage you to make it look as good as you can and not have all of your traffic. You've got a pretty tight turn if your building's gonna be built like it shows here. You're in a very busy section of East Broadway. I don't know if you even-
We're not building a building now.
Well, this plat has a building on it.
Right.
Okay, so that's the previous plat.
Yes, there is.
So, if you could bring in, if you could come in off the side street, it would be extremely helpful to come into that lot.
We are not gonna come in on Broadway at all. It's gonna be a solid fence across there. There's no turn-in off of Broadway at all. We'll be coming off Earl.
That's one of the problems that we've had, is that when you start getting long equipment that tries to make a turn-in to a situation off of a busy street. Answered my question.
The only access we will have will be coming off of Earl Street.
Good enough.
One of the things I think that we ought to do, didn't you say that there's some improvement, Mr. Voels, that the owners have agreed to do?
They're in the second.
Are they attached?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I see they're attached. Mr. Voels, it says a wood privacy fence. It doesn't have a height. It also says all requirements of the screening ordinance, which is in regard to the, how they do their screening. But it doesn't have the height of that fence.
Eight foot. Eight foot's required along the residential side.
Okay, so if that's required, so we don't have to put it-
And they did mention the wrought iron on the front and west side of the planning position. There is a wood fence, six foot high, between them and the bank. Bank put that up.
Okay.
Is there any amendments you think, Mr. Voels, that are necessary at this point?
If they're not building a building, the right-of-way proposed for Broadway is 80 feet, and if they would agree to dedication to have street, probably that would be the only thing I could think of. I don't think it's, we normally, in this kind of case, without a building going up, we wouldn't require street enhancement. But we do want to get ready for when the state does build East Broadway on that section.
Did the bank, did they dedicate right-of-way there, too?
Yes, they did.
Oh, yeah.
I think they even moved the curb back. But this, they're not building a building, so it's kind of a minor development.
Alderman Gibson?
I just was, will this be a paved parking lot?
No, sir, it'll be gravel.
Okay, so do they have to meet the requirements of containing the water within when planting the trees?
We're requiring the trees because they're similar uses, you're saying.
I mean, but if you built, if you don't have a per se parking lot, so it's gonna be gravel, that still, water's gonna, you know, we've got the requirement, and I don't know exactly of a tree per parking place, et cetera. I don't know how this would fit in there. But there's water coming, if water comes off of East Broadway, runs across this new area back into there, because it is a down slope. Is there any containment issues on that water that comes down through there?
I don't think so. We normally, on open gravel parking, dump a tree down the middle of that. In a commercial parking area, we would apply that one tree per six parking spaces. But this is industrial storage type, so that we wouldn't have that shading element. Now, they have agreed to those ginkgos that get fairly-
Are you concerned about where the water stands on that property?
No, no, not standing. If you were to pave that parking lot, we would require you to plant a tree with irrigation for ever six or eight parking spots. My question being, I don't want to start a precedent of being able to gravel a future parking lot and not have that same requirement in there, Mr. Voels.
Okay.
I don't want another-
Okay, so you're wanting them to be required.
No, I just wanted to make sure that at some point, that he needs to probably plan on having to do that. I mean, we require everybody else to do it. Now, the only difference is his isn't gonna be paved, but it's still gonna be parking.
Yeah.
Well, but there is a bit of a difference in that this is not gonna be parking for retail operation, I assume, is?
I think you're talking about the stormwater fund, and is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we make everybody else pay into the stormwater fund, or take care of the water.
Well, you can require that under a special use.
I mean, I just want to cover it here. I don't, I don't have a little medium. I just, if we require someone, they either put in the handling of the stormwater, or they pay a fee into the fund.
If you don't have ready for the intention, if you want to pay into the stormwater.
Well, one of the things, too, since the bank, I mean, this is a special use, and let me just ask this question if I could. Do you have a problem with dedicating some right-of-way in case we are able to, as the bank did, in the future, build a improvement out in that area that we're working on right now on East Broadway up to England Highway?
I do have two other brothers in business with me that I would like to discuss that with them, but as far as I know, no. But I would like to talk to them first before I make that decision.
Okay, well, what we can do is we can, you know, we can, if we're gonna act tonight, we need to put that in there, and then if you need to come, I mean, if you want us to pass something tonight, we need, we need to, I could go ahead, I could go ahead and ask for an amendment to be put in there, and that way, if they do agree, then it perhaps would be adopted tonight, depending on the council, and then you can go forward. Is that, would that be okay?
We do that, please.
Okay. There's two conditions, I think, that are being discussed. Could y'all discuss that with Mr. Voels and our city attorney and see if we can come up with some words so we can do a quick amendment here, and then perhaps deal with this tonight in a way that might at least get us to a vote. All right, is that okay with you, Alderman? Okay, is that okay with you? Let's go to the next item on the special call.
This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the Pulaski County Regional Solid Waste Management District and Waste Management of Arkansas for Residential Recycling, Curbside Pickup Services. First reading.
Okay, would you go ahead and put that on next council meeting's regular agenda and indicate that it has been read one time?
Yes, sir.
Then with that, I'll hold it. Let's go to the next item.
Next item is a resolution. Mayor Hayes, a resolution asking our congressional delegation to support increased funding for public transportation.
Move for adoption.
Second. Oh, in discussion, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
The next item is a resolution. Mayor Hayes, it's a-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a resolution supporting the city council partnering with the North Little Rock School District to renovate and improve the track and football field at the North Little Rock High School West Campus, requesting the mayor and director of finance to present a plan to finance said renovation and improvement.
Could I get a motion on that?
Move for adoption. Make the motion, because there's several discussions.
Motion made, and second it. Over the last six months, I have been visiting with various people at the high school, James Smith and some others who are interested in doing several things down at the high school, and one of which is improving the stadium as well as the track that joins the stadium. And most of the council, I think, will recall, I know that at least during the 15, 14 and a half years going on that I've been down here, that we have a working partnership with the school district with regard to the track that's behind Wildcat Stadium. I don't remember the exact percentages, but we, if not on a 50/50 basis, close to that, have been resurfacing that track at least once, and I'm not sure exactly how the construction or initial resurfacing went, but I don't know that I can go past there without seeing some of our folks walking around using that track. As we had discussions, the bottom line, that track needs resurfacing at this point, and is a part of what I would envision if this council supports, as well as the school district, us being able to go forward with that. Somewhere about a year ago, last spring, I attended a meeting where there was some discussion had about trying to improve Wildcat Field in order to do a variety of things. One, and I, you know, I was part of the transition from natural surface to artificial surface that was in the vogue in the, I guess, the 60s and 70s, and now it seemed that most people were moving, I'll say most, a lot were moving back away from artificial to natural, and now there's a bit of a movement back the other way. And, of course, my first questions were, you know, why would the high school want to move toward an artificial surface? And it didn't take very long before I discovered the reasons for that. That field can only be used for game events, and that limits it quite a bit simply because of the wear and tear on it. It can't be used for band practice. It can't be used for any other activities that we might even be able to recruit that would have small, I think the capacity is somewhere, what, 3,000, I believe, in terms of, so, I'm way off, 7,500. I should have known better. Alderman Thomas, me and you go to a few of those games. You probably go more than I do, but 7,500. And so, the artificial turf, if we were able to do that, as we found out, I think Springdale, the high school in Springdale is the other one, that the school would be able to use it quite a bit more often, morning, noon, and night, that we would be able to partner with them if we had the finals of a soccer tournament that could come to Wildcat Stadium, as well as other things that would support a 7,500 attendance venue and could be used on and on. And I think we all probably agree that Wildcat Stadium is in need of things other than turf, but that this might be the first step in trying to figure out a way that we might do other things. But obviously, this is the first step. So, I've been talking to the school district, and I think we know that there has been several budget cutbacks that have affected the school district this year. I think $600,000, $700,000 was just announced that James Smith had to find by the end of the year. And so, you know, their finances are fairly challenged, and yet, in talking to him, I know that I had asked them if they would be able to commit $100,000 if I could work with this city council in coming up with a significant amount more, and of course, it's reflected in that resolution, $500,000. And the school board, I think there's a little misunderstanding from the tenure of an article that appeared in the Democrat that I found out later was not exactly the way that the action of the school district was when it took place. And so, originally, I wasn't gonna move forward with this, and when I talked to several people, we found out that there was a lot of interest, just some initial concerns about how they could come up with those funds. I decided to go ahead and present this for the council's consideration in recognizing that the school district, as well as James Smith, is on vacation, on spring break right now, and that if we do adopt this tonight, then I would look to work with the school district and the Booster Club to see if there could be a further review of what their, at least initial position of some concern about where they were gonna find the money might be. I'll open the floor. Any questions from the council, but Manisa West is here, and I'd like for her to, and representing the Wildcat Booster Club, or tell me, you can tell us exactly who you, what the official name is, and feel free to make some comments, and then I'll open it for discussion by the council.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Hayes, Alderman, and city officials, my name is Manisa West, and I reside at 238 Skyline Drive. As a member of the North Little Rock High School Athletic Booster Club, I would like to make a statement tonight on behalf of a large and growing number of people in the community who support the renovations to our high school stadium and to the track. Among these people that I represent tonight are the Booster Club, the Band Boosters, the Soccer Booster Club, the JROTC program, football, track, and Spirit Group parents, to name a few, and those of us that don't have a life and couldn't go anywhere on spring break are here tonight. If y'all would stand up to show me, to show that we do have some support for this, these are representatives of some of those groups that I mentioned. I'm also speaking specifically on behalf of Wildcat Pride. This is an organization recently formed and recognized by the school board to represent the views of school patrons with regard to how the school's athletic program could be strengthened and improved. A subcommittee of the Booster Club, which is really the committee that Mayor Hayes was talking about, this subcommittee of the Booster Club has met with Mayor Hayes, Superintendent James Smith, Athletic Director Gary Goss, Chamber President Terry Hartwick, and others to determine the feasibility of this joint partnership between the school, the city, and the business community to make these improvements to the stadium and the track that would benefit, accrue benefit to all of these groups. When this Wildcat Pride group was organized, its facilities committee adopted the project that we already had under consideration, and it was, in fact, a recommendation from Wildcat Pride that was presented to the school board last Thursday night. As you may be aware, and as Mayor Hayes said, at that meeting, the school board members asked Mr. Smith to explore the possibility of raising this $100,000 from private donations or from some sort of fundraising campaign. My purpose here tonight is to make sure that you are aware that these organizations that I represent tonight are willing to commit, we are willing to commit financial resources, and we're also, as importantly, willing to commit people resources to attract fundraising events, fee-generating events, staff those events, and make sure that we have enough money that we can raise, not only from donations, but from events that we would sponsor there that would create a pool to take care of any necessary debt service if that should become available to make these improvements a possibility. What I really want to say is that we want to see this project happen, and we're willing to do whatever it takes to make it become a reality. We see the benefit to the community and to the school district to be that important. As a former school board member, I know how valuable it is to have the city and the business and the schools working together cooperatively. These groups that I've talked about tonight that I speak for want each of you to know how much we appreciate the support that this council has given to the school district over the years. It's been phenomenal. We also very much appreciate the leadership and the vision that Mayor Hayes has demonstrated in recognizing the civic and economic benefits that will accrue to the city as a result of these improvements, once the stadium and track facilities have been renovated. We also appreciate the support of the chamber and the business community and Terry Hartwick in rallying that business community's support as well, because it will be necessary to tap into some of the resources to make this come about. The benefit of these improved facilities are too numerous to mention tonight, but I think we only have to look back as far as last summer with the Snickers National Soccer Tournament to see how valuable and how productive that was for the community, and then more closely look at the effect of the 5A State Basketball Tournament that was hosted by the Booster Club and by the school district earlier this month. That event generated a lot of revenue for the community, a lot of enthusiasm among the school patrons, and more importantly, We are hopeful that you will look favorable upon any kind of legislation that Mayor Hayes proposes to you that will assist in these stadium and track improvements and keep the door open while the groups that I represent formalize their contributions that they might be able to make and present those to the school board so that we, as we hope to gain forward, go forward and get their approval on any kind of proposition that might be put before them. Those are the end of my prepared remarks, I'd be happy to address any kind of questions if that's appropriate at this time from the mayor, from any of the council members.
Any questions?
Just wanted, it's conceivable that if we agree to this, would this be for this fall?
Go ahead.
We would like to go ahead and have the school district open the bids or let the bids on this artificial turf because that's the centerpiece of a lot of the things that would be necessary to go forward and we would like to see that happen as soon as the last soccer game is held this year, that construction starts so that we are prepared for next year. There are some things that are possible that we could bring to that stadium that have some time elements associated with it that are dependent upon the renovations and to some extent to that turf. So time is a major thing.
Yeah, and let me also indicate that if the council adopts this resolution, I know that I would get with the school district very quickly and also the boosters and others because, you know, what we're committing is something that will go toward accomplishing this, but it would by no means do it all. At least the cost estimates that I've been given have told me that you're looking at, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand give or take for the track and somewhere close to five hundred thousand in that neighborhood for the turf. And that's, that figure for the turf is assuming that some preparatory work is done and that the community, and I know for example, in talking about some of the things that I felt we would try to do is the end zones, there would be some asphalting that would need to be done, perhaps public works should work on that. It's my thinking that we would go out into the community and try to find some contractors or people with the equipment that could help us with the dirt work and the site preparation. And also part of that is while nothing of any large financial resources would be directed toward the stadium, you know, part of what I would consider necessary in order for us to move forward with this is for us to figure out a plan that while we may not do a whole lot of structural improvement to the stadium, painting, fixing up some of the bathrooms, making sure that, you know, things are fix up, paint up, clean up kind of things, so when the fall gets here, you know, that we have a really class facility down there field wise and then we'll say, I won't want to use the word variable, but the best that we can do with a nineteen thirties, whenever that was constructed, thirty-six, nineteen thirty-six, that has seen relatively few improvements so that we can do the best with that at this point. So that would be, that would be my plan. So if we should adopt this and if we're not able to put this together in a fairly short period of time because Ms. West is correct that, you know, in order to get this done at a time when the last activity for the year would be concluded before the first and the fall, things have to click along pretty quickly. So, you know, it would certainly again be my intent to see if the school board might be inclined to revisit along with other efforts that might need to be done for this other larger, or not larger, other community effort to try to address some needs that I think the stadium has.
One other question, and you may or not be able to answer it, but if we did not agree to this, what's the annual cost of maintaining the current football field as it is now?
That I don't know. I don't know that. It, I don't know how significant it is in the overall budget, but the thing that's important there is that because of the field that we have, we can't do anything except play those games. That means that we can't hold regional or state band competitions. The school district has one of the most recognized JROTC programs in the nation. We can't host those competitions. The track facilities, we, the location of that facility is so desirable for statewide events. When we had the state basketball tournament here last, earlier this month, we have people saying, please host this every year, you're so central. We have the ability to create a sports complex there that will not only benefit the school and the students, but to bring in those dollars into the community. It's just too perfect of a thing to pass up. So the maintenance there is a minor thing compared to what the potential is if we were able to do something different with it.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Alderman Gibson?
Mayor, I guess the timeframe is that the bids would have to be, the plan will have to be formalized now and the bids would have to go out so that construction could begin by June one?
It's my understanding that the district, the athletic department has already put into motion a bid arrangement, so we have...
What all is in this bid arrangement?
I think the bid that has been prepared is for the artificial turf because that's the primary thing and that's the thing that would be so time consuming. But time is, time would be pressing in order to be able to have it.
So the time of essence is, is that it rules out being able to go to the state and ask for special appropriation because the timeframe, the money would not come in. Obviously, I have priorities, this fits within those priorities, but obviously the health department, building and the community center are two keys. And so if we're going to look at, I mean, I can tell you, or Mr. Sissons and I could probably turn the thing upside down and refinance an existing bond issue and find the money to do that, but if we do that, I want to also get the money together to do the health department and the community center. I don't think that we need to overlook those as we move down this process.
I don't know that I disagree with you, but I don't know, timing is, I mean, we can come back with that, but timing is not as pressing.
It's not as pressing, but you can't redo a bond issue to redo a bond issue, you need, the cost involved of redoing one is so prohibitive, you don't, I mean, I can rattle in my mind, I think Bob, you can tell me that the big bond issue, are we in our third, second or third year of the five year?
Third year.
Starting the third year. So that gives us an opportunity, so if we're going to do it, let's look at trying to do...
I don't have a problem.
And that can be done pretty quickly. And that's the only revenue source I know of at this point that reaches into this realm.
I was going to ask if that was the preferred source.
Well, right now, that's what's being considered, but first things first, and the first thing is, obviously again, we would have to bring this back to the council and would listen to input, I just, you know, wanted, before we even go, you know, this is not saying that we're going to be able to figure it out, it's just saying that we're going to try.
Mayor, I'm telling you, I'm for it, but I want to also include the other two in there.
I hear you.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr., I'm sorry, Alderman Yulick.
You know, while I support the charging Wildcats, there is a distinct difference in the responsibilities of this city council and this city government and the North Little Rock School Board, okay? And, well, I'm not necessarily talking to you, but I don't mean that bad, I just, you know, I'm not looking for you to answer, I'm making statements.
Manisa, thank you very much.
And my question was where are you going to get half a million dollars to put fake grass on, in the stadium? And so now I guess the answer to that is, because I didn't know anything about this, is we're going to do a bond issue or that's the thinking and get the money to put into the school district into the stadium. I mean, is that what we're thinking? Because I was wondering where we were going to cut it out of our budget, if we were going to cut police cars or any kind of other capital improvement we had already done, sidewalks, street program, whatever, to get a half a million dollars. So is the area that we're looking at is doing another bond issue?
Well, refinancing would be one approach.
Okay, all right.
You know, between now and then, who knows? We may find that Mr. Soski wins his lawsuit and we get the Supreme Court releases the...
Well, that'd be great if he did that, but if that happens, but if it does happen, that money to me is city money and we're not talking about going and helping install it, doing some asphalt work, street department, maybe even sending street department guys or somebody down there, they always get stuck with all those kind of jobs, but going down there and helping them put it in or glue it down or whatever. I mean, we're talking about paying a half a million dollars cash money of our city money to go out there and do something for the school district. And I think, and I think we really need to look at that. Now, yeah, you can go back and say in the years past that the city did the walking track and the walking track was used on a daily basis by citizens all over and that's the reason that was done and it's accessible, you know, in the evenings when the school district wasn't using it for people all over the city and that really made sense. But we're talking about a half a million dollars into the, into an athletic program and I'm not on the school board and it's not my responsibility, but I'll talk to people that are, you know, and it's their business, but the school board, the school board maybe needs to look at leaking roofs in elementary schools and everything else besides, before we start looking at putting fake grass in the field. Now, it'd be really nice, but there's definitely a division of government and the school district and who should be doing what. And we're not just talking about a little bit of money here and I think we really need to think about that before we start thinking about whether we're borrowing the money, whether we're getting it off of a lawsuit we win on use taxes or whatever we do. And here again, I mean, I'm at the games too, my son and I go, we support the charging Wildcats, Olin's always there, we do it. But, I mean, I have to look at the money that the city, that the citizens of North Little Rock provide us to run the city and of all the things that we have to spend money for and whether it's capital or whether it's operational, and then here we are spending a half a million dollars to the school district. You know, I think we really need to look at that because this is not just like a little bit of money, it's half a million dollars. So, you know, maybe what they should do is look at seeing if they can raise the whole amount through their program and not coming back on the city for a half a million dollars. Because I didn't know we had a half a million dollars to give anybody and that's just where I'm coming from. And here again, I support the program, but it's a different, it's different, the school district is different than us and it's, you know, while I want to help them in any way, when you're talking about that kind of money, I think we really need to look at it. And that's my, that's my statement.
Alderman Berry?
Can't we still pursue the legislative idea too? Even if it's after the fact?
We, you know, certainly we can, no doubt about it. I disagree with Alderman Yulick, I think that this would be a very beneficial asset of the city, that we would be able to utilize it for a variety of things that are not simply for the school district, that could go much broader than that. I mentioned, you know, our parks and recreation activities with the soccer tournament, we could have a final, a final game that would, our games that would be utilized down there. There are other activities that could come there that would draw people into this community. But yes, you're right, the school district would benefit and I think it deserves to benefit and I think it would improve a lot of the opportunities for our young people there. So, you know, I don't, I don't separate the school district, to be honest with you, in large measure, I know they're different funding, they're different governing boards, but it's a part of this community is integral, I think, as any other operation of this community. And in many communities, city hall runs the schools. The mayor, through the confirmation of the city council, picks the superintendent, or not superintendent, but the school board. And I think those communities who neglect their public education are those that suffer because of it. So I totally disagree with you in not partnering on a variety of things in terms of what would make this community better. Each of us have our opinion, we may differ on this and we'll just see where the votes come down.
Well, I have one more thing, same, any school district would make it, no requirement that you take American government, but they want to get, put fake grass in a stadium, I have a problem with and that's, yeah, that's enough said.
Any other discussion? Alderman Vestal?
Mayor, I think for one thing, this is related to this because we're talking about finance. And I believe that the school district of this city should look into redrawing their boundaries so that all these industrial areas that are inside the Palatik County School District that are funding that district and do not fund this district. And that way they'd have the money to fix their leaky roofs and all that.
Alderman, I don't think any of us disagree with that. The unfortunate thing is that the Arkansas Legislature is by and large precluded us from being able, a court some ten years ago or thereabouts made the school district boundaries then, and I don't know how much it's changed, for the city of Little Rock co-terminus or co-existent with the, with the boundaries of that city. We have been suffering, our school district's been suffering for many years because of our lack of ability, their lack of ability to do exactly what you mentioned. Union Pacific Railroad, one of the largest financial entities in the city, is in the county when it comes to where they pay their property taxes. It's not been because the school district hadn't wanted them in there, it's not been because, you know, we don't want them in there, everything east of sixty-seven, one sixty-seven, you know, an Alderman Thomason, Alderman Robinson's own ward is in the county. Our, you know, our industrial park that we paid good money to support in infrastructure, every new business that goes in and out there goes to the county. Rest assured, that's not a decision that any of us have made, nor would we not change our minds if we had the opportunity. And the best that we could get adopted out at the legislature, I think, was when I was out there fifteen years ago and we got a small opportunity if certain conditions were meant to shave off a little bit, you know, if certain legal problems were addressed, minority to majority and those kinds of things. So it's a real complicated issue and it's something that is to a large degree unfair. But it hasn't been because, because we didn't, we wouldn't like to make our boundaries co-existent with, city boundaries co-existent with school district boundaries.
Mayor, maybe the citizens of this city along with this council and the school board need to write letters to those legislatures, not just ones from their own district.
I have, you know, absolutely. I think, I think there's a tough sell, but I don't argue with your point.
Because I, you know, it's not that I have anything at the county school district, but the facilities in this city should pay for the education of our children and is not able to do that because of the way that things are going on now.
They have one of the largest school districts in the state.
You're absolutely right.
Mayor, I think if you read the article this week, Jacksonville has taken theirs to a vote. I think they're, they've got the petitions pretty well put together and they'll vote sometime this summer to set a Jacksonville school district, which will be school district number, I guess, three hundred and eleven or three hundred and twelve, whatever it is. I think we have an opportunity as they start, they're going to redraw the boundaries of the school districts out at the legislature this time, they're going to have to. But this just happened to be a piece that stays in my desk and it shows you that there's almost a third of the city of North Little Rock that's not in our school, not in our school district. And I think it's totally unfair, it also is unfair that we're asking those people outside who live inside the city but outside the school district, we're using funds and for this purpose, which is something we need to do. But we've got to, if, the school board has never taken a stand, and this is not any time recently, of saying we want to expand this, and I'm sure there's some reasons for it, but I brought it up last time and I'll continue to bring it up, and that we need to go to the school, to the, to this, people who are consolidating all these districts. It's totally unfair that a person lives almost a pine bluff, goes to junior high and high school in Seven Hills. That's unfair, it's unfair to the people and it's going to be very difficult for us to continue to grow the eastern part of our city unless you live on a golf course or a lake. It's going to be very difficult to build that if the people have to drive great distances. It's unfair to the children, it's unfair to the parents that they have to drive that far and we just need to do something about it.
That's the west side too?
West side too.
And we're taking another annex in maybe, depends on how our lawsuit goes, and we're taking a huge amount of property in and we already have Marmel Boulevard to Count Smackley in the school district line, stopped at my house, stopped before my house.
See, at least those people have a somewhat ready school to go to. If you live out not too far past Mr. Thomas's business, you go to School of Scott where he's one through six, the seventh grade through the twelfth grade, you go to Seven Hills. And that's totally unfair to those people who live out there.
Well, you got even a word for it, you got people who go to Seven Hills.
You do.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to add that I think this, us as a council and a city, this would be a great investment in the city of North Little Rock's youth. be a great investment in the city of North Little Rock's youth going through our school systems, especially North Little Rock High School, and I'm, I guess, basically tells you that I'm in favor of, uh, of this resolution. But I think it, I think we as a city are missing a golden opportunity here by, you know, by helping the school district out with renovation of the football field. It's just a, just a major investment that we can make in our, in our future.
Let's add the track.
I was, I was saying, the ball is in her court, that they can come up with the funds, that we'll try to come up with this amount, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Pass.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
I, I'll say yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Six to one.
Thank you very much. Now, we need to figure out what we can bring back to the council. Uh, I think that's all, especially.
No, no, we've got the amendment to the original piece that got held, I'm sorry.
All right, back on, uh...
Item number two.
Back on the, uh, item number two. Uh, that's now back for us, uh, do you have an amendment?
Yes, Mayor, in section two, we, uh, will amend it by adding a subsection two D and two E, which will state, D shall be state, "The dedication of a ten-foot right-of-way along Broadway." E would be payment into the city storm water management fund at a rate of five thousand dollars per acre.
And that's the standard amount that is paid in, isn't it?
That's according to Mr. Bowles.
Uh, is that your motion, Alderman?
I'll make that motion, and I guess also to put the word eight foot between A and wood and, and two B, so there be no misunderstanding about that fence as long to back.
All right, there are three parts, uh, eight foot, uh, to ensure the height of the fence, uh, and add the, uh, uh, the dedication as well as the storm drainage. Uh, on the motion to amend, is there a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Pass.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
No.
Five to two.
Motion's adopted. Now, on the, is there emergency clause?
No, 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 that's the amendment.
No, that's on the amendment, I'm sorry.
It's four, four.
You're right.
Four, three, and the mayor, is it four, three?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
Four, three.
It's four, three because break fast.
That's the amendment, so that, that's the amendment, okay.
Okay.
All right, now, is there a motion to adopt, is amended?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Motion made, second, a discussion, Alderman Vestal.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes, sir.
How much special use industrial do we have on Highway seventy?
How many special uses?
How many special uses for industrial, for the industrial zoning do we have on Highway seventy, or East Broadway?
I can't say offhand. I know the car lot was a special use down at Omega, um, probably the car sales lot at McNeil was a special use, uh, so there's probably five or six. But the, the use over time has been intensive along Broadway, a lot of Broadway. Broadway from here to Rose Cities, all C-four, so that's intensive. From there, uh, going east to C-three, uh, going north on one sixty-one, there's been more C-four type activity than this stretch of Broadway, I would think, but that's not Highway seventy.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? On the motion to adopt, is amended, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
No.
Height?
No.
Three to four?
Fails.
Motion fails.
That's all of special call, did you want to go to regular?
Go to regular agenda.
First item is resolution oh three twenty, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is a resolution setting a weight limit on Faulkner Lake Road.
I'll hold that.
Okay. Next item is resolution oh three twenty-six, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement between the city of North Little Rock and Ramsey, Crook, Farrell, and Lenzing to provide for an extension of the comprehensive loss and business interruption insurance for the Murray hydroelectric plant.
Thank you.
Uh, do you have an amendment? Didn't you pass around an amendment?
Yes, Mayor, that's been distributed, and I believe the city clerk mailed them out as well.
Mr. Bowles, uh, Mr. Humm, I think you can visit with Mr. Bowles and, uh, you know, see what kind of options might be out there, uh, so we're, uh, it, it passed tonight, so we're sorry. Thank y'all very much. Uh, all right, now, you've got your amendment?
Uh, yes, Mayor, it's been passed out, just the, uh, contract for insurance, and it's been distributed, each of y'all have a copy.
This, so this is, needs to be amended in.
As exhibit A, that's correct.
Exhibit A to our, to R-oh three twenty-six.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
And this too, right? I, I'm kind of confused. It's amendment.
That's oh three two twenty-six, and there's an R and an O.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
I, I did the same thing, so. I traced, I know mine's laying here.
Yeah, this is an R.
This is R.
All right.
This is the, uh, insurance for the hydro.
Motion made, second, does it amend, uh, R-oh three two oh? Uh, on the motion to amend?
R-oh three two six.
No, not two oh, uh, two six. On the motion to amend?
Gibson?
To R-oh three twenty-six.
That's correct.
Okay, Gibson, vote yes.
Yolding?
Yeah.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Now, the motion to adopt, is amended.
Move.
Motion made, second, adopt, is amended, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance oh three twelve, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, please hold it.
Okay. Next item is ordinance oh three nineteen, Mayor Hayes.
Let's read it.
This is the ordinance adopting the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code two thousand and two edition, second reading.
Unless somebody tells me a different, I'm gonna hold that now. Let's go to the next item.
Okay. Resolution oh three thirty, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is a resolution appointing Maurice R. Taylor to the North Little Rock Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Motion made by Ms. Robinson. Seconded by Alderman Vestal. Uh, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Uh, I saw Mr. Taylor come in, I think I see him at the back. Mr. Taylor, you want to stand up for us? Uh, Mr. Taylor and I had an opportunity to visit, uh, and, uh, we were real enthused about his, uh, service on the planning commission. We just adopted, uh, the, uh, resolution unanimously, and Ms. Robinson moved for adoption, and, uh, and, and we're looking forward for you to help us with that. As you and I talked, uh, last week, that's a very active and very important commission, and we appreciate your willingness to, uh, contribute to the effective running of the city. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Next item?
Resolution oh three thirty-one, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution designating the Office of Volunteer Services as a point of contact for North Little Rock residents who have family members deployed with the military in order to assist them with issues related to their family members' deployment.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
I want to thank, uh, I don't see Fritz.
He's right there.
I wonder I couldn't see you, right in front of me.
Wait a minute.
Fritz Friedle, uh, Fritz came to me and, uh, and, uh, offered, uh, his office to undertake this, uh, uh, opportunity for this city to make a small contribution, and we appreciate, uh, Mr. Friedle's initiative, this council's confirmation, and, and, and as much those young men and women who are in harm's way, and, uh, and we want to do everything we can to, to, to support them. Next item?
Resolution oh three thirty-two, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a project cooperation agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to stabilize the riverbank in the vicinity of the I-four thirty bridge.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Yes. Just paid for the dumpster.
Resolution oh three thirty-four, Alderman Vestal and Berry.
Okay.
Alderman Vestal and Berry?
Call it, please.
A, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to accept the low bid and enter into a contract with Cobar Contracting Incorporated, North Little Rock, Arkansas, for street drainage and sidewalk improvements, Sycamore Street from forty-seventh to fiftieth street, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand and twenty-five dollars from forty-seventh to, I'm sorry, project number three sixty-six, twentieth year two thousand and two, CDBG program.
Move for adoption.
Thank you. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Resolution oh three thirty-five, Alderman, Thomas and Alderwoman Robinson?
Call it.
A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to accept the low bid and enter into a contract with Burkehalter Technologies Incorporated, Marmel, Arkansas, for street drainage and sidewalk improvements, Post Street Rogers to Alma, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars, twentieth year two thousand and three, CDBG program.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Alderman Robinson, second.
Mhm, second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance oh three twenty-five, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is the ordinance creating the position of special advisory member to the Parks and Recreation Commission, appointing Mayor William F. Casey Lehman to said position, first reading.
First amendment, place on second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance oh three twenty-five, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is the ordinance creating the position of special advisory member to the Parks and Recreation Commission, appointing Mayor William F. Casey Lehman to said position, first reading.
First amendment, place on second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
This is the ordinance creating the position of special advisory member to the Parks and Recreation Commission, appointing Mayor William F. Casey Lehman to said position, second reading.
First amendment, place the ordinance on a third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance oh three twenty-five, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is the ordinance creating the position of special advisory member to the Parks and Recreation Commission, appointing Mayor William F. Casey Lehman to said position, third and final reading.
I have a comment. Uh, I think this is a good thing, uh, and the reason that I suppose that you came up with this was because we didn't have any, any slots on the Parks Commission. Uh, however, and I'm going to vote for this tonight, and I think that will let Mayor Lehman, you know, get back in the swing of things, and see what, how the Parks are doing, and see what he can do. But, uh, the legislature had just adopted Act eight twenty-four of two thousand and three, governor has signed it, it doesn't have an emergency clause on it, so, uh, it won't go into effect for ninety days after the session, uh, after they adjourn, and they may not adjourn for another ninety days, even more, so it may be towards the first of the year that, uh, that this law actually goes into effect. And, and what the act does is allow, in fact, Representative Steele actually was one of the sponsors, what it does is allow, or Senator Steele, it allows for cities to have up to fifteen members on the Parks and Recreation Commission. to go ahead and increase that by two members, up to nine, and then we can actually put him in as a voting member, and then we, I'm sure there's other people too that, that, uh, would be interested in serving, uh, but, so I think that should really help.
That's a mayor's appointment, though.
It is a mayor's appointment, but I would bring in the legislation to enable you to do that.
I appreciate that.
Okay, well, that's what I'm gonna do whenever it comes in, uh, because if we couldn't do that, as you said before, there wasn't a position, but there will be a position, and, and, uh, or we can make a position and give you the opportunity to do that.
We appreciate it. Any other discussion? Uh, do I have a motion to adopt on third and final?
No, move.
Second. Motion made, seconded on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On emergency Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Next items, ordinance oh three twenty-six Alderman Height?
Please call it.
This is an ordinance amending section number eighty-three dash twenty-six of the North Little Rock Municipal Code in order to allow decorative banners on light poles in commercial zones, first reading.
I've got an amendment to this, and then I wanna...
State your amendment.
Okay, the amendment, uh, did everybody get a, get the handout? Basically, uh, in section one, uh, I wanna delete the words "up to fifty percent of", which would read then decorative banners on light po, on the light poles within parking lots, and then in the second, uh, third sentence, uh, "said banner shall be made of cloth or vinyl" and insert the word "only" and delete the words "and be no larger than five feet by two feet in size." That's basically, delete, did you get that? Where I delete, I delete the words?
I've, I've got your amendment, I'm just, I'm just thinking.
Okay, I'll, I'll explain that in a minute, why, why I deleted the five feet by two feet.
Well, so that, that, that'll be a second to that, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made, seconded, now we're in discussion on the amendment.
I, I do have a question, with, if we change this and take out the size, is that gonna allow them to string a line between poles and put a big banner up there?
No. What happened, let me, let me tell you how this came about, uh, a large developer, uh, spent several millions of dollars over to, uh, remodel and refurbish and, uh, redevelop McCain Plaza, and when it came time for them to hang their banners that are similar to our banners on, on Main Street and similar to the banners over in McCain Mall and Lakewood Village, uh, the, uh, sign code had been changed by ordinance restricting them and prohibiting them from hanging banners that basically it was their logo or their image, you know, their logo that they wanted to hang there, and so they, uh, arranged a temporary permit to hang those banners on their light poles in their parking lot, uh, over in McCain Plaza, until I could get the sign code tweaked where they'd be authorized to do that on a permanent basis. There's many shopping centers, there's many businesses in North Little Rock that are, that are currently hanging banners from their light poles or from their building that are advertising either logos or using for holidays or special promotions or activities and so forth, so the Danny Thomas Company just wanted to be able to hang their little five-foot by two-foot banners over there, and when they, when they asked me to, uh, to, uh, consider this for them, the five-foot by two-foot is their size banner that they have hanging over there presently, but if you're looking around at all the banners in McCain Mall or Lakewood Village, they're much larger than that, so if, if I restricted it to five-foot by two-foot, then the banners that are already up in a lot of businesses and shopping centers around North Little Rock would be out of compliance.
Now, we're on the motion to amend.
I understand. Has either part of this gone to the sign board?
They, they, uh, the sign board heard it, Robert, were you there, you were in attendance, weren't you, the sign board?
I don't believe the sign board's heard this on, on the market plaza we did.
Well, back last fall they did, when they wanted to hang them right after their grand opening, and they wanted to hang them up for Christmas. The sign board granted them a...
Temporary.
Temporary, like the first, oh, three months of this year.
But if I understand this amendment right, any commercial venture, anywhere in the city, could hang an, a, a sign of any size on every pole in their parking lot?
That's what's there.
The sign, the banner...
And it could be made of any, it could, it could be, it had to be made of cloth or vinyl, but it could be of any size and could be on, not, see, this, this, this came in, and I wasn't too happy about it, but I was somewhat got comfortable with it, but when you go, 'cause it was only gonna be on half the poles, it was gonna be five by two, and it's gonna be seasonal, and all of a sudden now it's gonna be twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, and on every pole, and of any size, and, and, uh, I'm simply not gonna vote for the amendment.
Well, okay, then, if, we can limit it to five by two, but I drove around looking at, at signs over on land, on banners, excuse me, over on Landers and Warden Road and Lakewood Village, uh, there's even, there's, there's three businesses up on Park Hill that have got banners, and they're larger than the five by two.
Are they on every single pole in their parking lot?
No, they're not on every single pole, no. The ones in, in McCain Plaza are on about eighty percent of the poles there, the ones over in Lakewood Village are about, on about fifty to sixty percent of the poles, the poles in the, uh, what's the Toyota District, uh, dealership down there on, uh, is that North Point, inside of the city limits? They've got, they must be eight by three, and they're on every pole, and the ones at the Saturn dealership approximately, they're probably six by three.
That's in a...
They're all different sizes.
That's in a major highway commercial, I mean, you're, you're saying that any commercial piece of property?
Well, then we can, we can restrict, I mean, if we put the five by two back in there, this, I mean, the Danny...
But you still, but you also left a hundred percent of the poles, that means that anywhere up on Park Hill, that if they got three poles on their piece of property, they could hang a, a, a big sign hanging off the side of it, and, and I don't think that's what we wanna do, I'd prefer that this go to the sign board, let them structure it and send it back, because this is a major change, a change to our sign ordinance, because this says, it, it has no restrictions on it, other than they gotta be made of cloth or vinyl.
Alderman, I might suggest you consider that, I kinda feel the wind blowing in a direction that might, might indicate that would be a wise thing to do, but that's up to you.
Okay, well, let me, let, then there are, then there, let me ask this question then, is there any, is there any standards in, in, in North Little Rock as far as the size of the banners that are presently up, that are presently flying?
That's my question, could Mr. Boyle's come up?
I'm sure that there, there were no standards and they set standards.
That's right. Explain to us the history, I know Alderman, Witcher is not here, and if he was here, we wouldn't have all these problems.
You have to hear this argument.
We, we change the sign code, um, a lot, and that's normal in cities.
Yeah.
But, uh, we have, we allow one banner, it can be five by twenty. So it can be, but it's only one per premise.
Five by twenty?
And it can be that large.
That's a banner?
Yeah.
But it's not a permanent banner.
And we're talking about it, yeah.
Now, the small banners you're talking about hanging in the light poles, uh, they have to be American flags to be allowed, right?
Yeah, that was gonna be my amendment, as long as it's an American flag or supporting the troops, then I'm for it.
That's in the code.
That's what they wanna do.
Then, the, the presently, the businesses that are flying banners?
They must have gotten, uh, a waiver or have not been cited yet.
They can go and get a special use for it, there's a, there's a mechanism to do that with.
On the sign board.
Or go to, I mean, or go to the Board of Adjustment, go to the sign board, that's the first place to go, I, I don't think we need to, to change, I, I can just imagine.
We're on the motion, we're on the motion to amend.
Uh, I'll vote no.
Well, I hadn't called it yet.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I hadn't called for a vote, Alderman Height?
I wanna ask a question.
That's what we were considering with my amendment, is that correct?
You want the amendment, did you call for a vote, you wanna vote on the amendment?
Please.
On the motion?
I wanna ask a question here first, did you tell me that this was okay with Witcher? 'Cause he's the sign man on this board.
Murray and I, Murray and I talked about this, and we talked about the, how we did not want it to become one of these where they string them up amongst poles like they used to be, those triangular banners, these were basically gonna be used, or going to be used, they're presently being used for seasonal activities, uh, you know, you know, holidays, Christmas, uh, uh, Easter, whatever, uh, and their logos, um, you can go up to, you can drive up to any of the shopping centers up there in my ward, and you'll see that they've got their logo on these banners, hanging on light poles.
Mayor?
Alderman Vestal?
And all they, all this, uh, developer that asked me to do was, they'd like to, like to, me to remove this inequity and allow them to hang their banners advertising their shopping center.
Alderman Vestal?
Um, Mayor, I don't have too much of a problem with this without the amendment on it, if we fail the amendment, because if, and what, in fact, what Mr. Boyle says is all these banners are out of compliance anyway, unless they are, unless they have a waiver.
That's true. Alderman Yielding?
Well, maybe, maybe not, I mean, if, if, if there's somebody out of compliance, then the sign man at code can go through there and tell us, I, I think if I were you, I'd kinda hold this dude up till next time, and then let the code enforcement go ahead and, and, uh, and look around and, and, and let everybody understand what the code is and what's going on, uh, but you can do what you wanna do.
Let's get, let's just get a, a vote on the, on the amendment, that we, that really, on the motion to amend?
Gibson?
No.
Yielding?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes, okay.
Barry?
I don't know, uh, I...
Vestal?
No.
Height?
Yes.
Three to three.
Amendment fails, which is pleasure, Alderman. I don't, I think it might be wise to hold it.
I'll hold it.
Get Murray here, he's gonna vote for it now, if he passed.
May, maybe, maybe we do a little work on the interim.
If he's gonna vote for it.
Yeah, he will.
Next item?
Ordinance oh three twenty-seven Alderman Gibson and Yielding?
Read it.
This is an ordinance authorizing a change order for the city sidewalk program for the two thousand and three sidewalk program, first reading.
Let's suspend rules and place it on the second reading.
Uh, I, may I ask a question, I guess, is that...
You gotta second first.
I'll second that, but we gotta get the, we had an attachment, it said Exhibit A, which was the change order, and we, it was mailed to us, but I don't have it.
Where's the attachment? You got one, we'll just put it on there.
Does anybody else have it?
This was to simply add in a hundred foot of, from Skyline to North Hills.
How about giving that to Ms. Whitby, unless she has it?
I have it.
She has it.
I mailed it to them.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Lose her. She's gonna lose hers.
Wait a minute, hold on, we got a motion made, seconded for adoption, now let's get that attachment of...
That was what this was, was to attach this.
Okay, that was your motion?
Yes, motion, 'cause you, it's an ordinance, so it's not for...
Okay, well, that, it was called, and then in order to get it before us, I took that as a motion.
Excuse me, you're correct.
Now, now I need a motion to amend by attachment.
But I, we can't have two motions on the floor at one time, so you've got a motion to put on a second reading is there, so we need to vote on that.
I didn't hear that one, I heard, I...
Well, I thought that's what you heard.
Alderman Yielding made a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, let's vote on that, you're correct, on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Now let's move to amended.
Okay, it's to add, uh, Skyline to North Hills, it's a hundred-foot length of sidewalk to tie in together there on the end.
Which is essentially to attach Exhibit A that wasn't attached.
That's right, this is Exhibit A, and Ms. Whitby has...
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I, I wanna ask if, if we're equally awards on our sidewalks.
Yes, we are.
Well, if you put two years, if you put two years into it, because we gave up footage in ours last year.
For everybody else.
For everybody else, particularly for Ward four.
No, three.
On the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Now, it's been amended, do we, uh, do we need to suspend the rules?
They've already done that, it needs to be read a second time.
All right, let's read it.
Have we already read a second time?
No, it isn't.
This is an ordinance authorizing a change order for the city sidewalk program for the two thousand and three sidewalk program, second reading.
Let's suspend rules and place it...
Well, let's wait a second, Alderman Vestal?
Um, Mr. Smith, I believe put the program together, sidewalk program? Yeah, um, I'm at, uh, the sidewalk that we're wanting to build out of Cooks Landing?
Yes.
Now, I, I, I don't know how come this got by me before now, but why are we doing that?
I, I think I can help out a little bit there.
I mean, because I've got, I've got residents that need sidewalks a whole lot worse than those people out of Cooks Landing.
One of the, one of the things, I know that, that, and of course, this council certainly has their right to do what they want to, but there are a tremendous amount of people who use that to fish, uh, I would say, you know, residents of this city, obviously people who are not of this city, and, and I know in my, in my, going out to the Hydro Plan as well as that trail, uh, saw pathways that, to me, were fairly, uh, dangerous in terms of how people followed those to get down to the, to the area where they fished, so I, you know, I felt that, that that would be a wise investment, you know, both for those who live in the city as well as those who use that area, uh, both for safety's sake as well as for accessibility, uh, for recreation, that I don't know a time that I've gone out there when I hadn't seen somebody, you know, enjoying that, uh, recreational opportunity, and I would hope that most of them are from North Little Rock, but indeed, it's open for anyone, so that's why I put, why is Mr. Boyle, I mean, Mr. Smith, to put that on those li, on our list.
I've, I was just curious, Mayor, um, it's not that I'll have a problem with us spending money on the, on that area.
That's our property.
And on, on, I, I understand that's our problem, but, um, you know, I, it's just, I don't know, I've got p, you know, areas up around, uh, the Kansas, uh, Amboy Elementary School, for example, that I've got kids that are walking up and down Military Avenue, or Military Drive, every day to go back and forth to the school, and there's no sidewalks. And I mean, I'm just...
Alderman, it is a choice, you know, it, it is a choice, and, and I, I would hope, I mean, I, I really don't...
I'm not gonna vote against it, but I just wanted, you know, make sure that...
Well, we, you know, and, and it, and one of the things that, I mean, I don't examine, you know, when I make this, uh, presentation, uh, and Mr. Smith does, I don't examine, you know, every one, I ask him to develop a plan, there are a few times when I add things to the list, this was indeed one that I did, and, and I know that I, the first thing I did, you know, when I was developing, uh, plans for sidewalks is I asked Mr. Smith to talk to, to Mr. Smith, uh, at the school district, to be real sensitive to exactly what you said, and, uh, and, and I would continue to, to list that as a priority, and if indeed some of these others, uh, as well as this, if this council chose to, to amend that priority, I really have no pride of authorship, uh, 'cause schoolchildren and going back and forth, you know, indeed is my top priority, so, uh, you know, this is what the second, this is the third, third year, I believe, we're dealing with a sidewalk program, uh, and that was the first thing that I had Mr. Smith do, is talk to Mr. Smith about exactly what you're talking about, uh, so I did ask that those be added, uh, to this, uh, you know, which is in your, in your ward, because I saw trails well beaten down out there that were going down what I thought was a fairly dangerous route, and that, uh, young people as well as old people, uh, could benefit by having, uh, sidewalks there, so, you know, if, if anyone wanted to address that, uh, with a change in terms of where other priorities are, I certainly don't have any objection.
Well, like I said, Mayor, I, I just wanted, I was just curious as where that came from, and, you know, 'cause like I said, we have a need for sidewalks in, in our ward, and, um, I'm not gonna, I, I'm not opposed to it, I've been down there many times back in my, back in my day when I used to fish down in that area, and, uh, it is difficult, I'm sure it's not gotten any better, um...
I was there yesterday.
Did you follow in?
No, but I was down Cooks Landing yesterday, I didn't say...
But, um, and, you know, I, just a few questions, and I, and I, and I'm ready to vote.
Alderman?
I, I know that we have a good bid, and I think that's, uh, Alderman Yielding and Smith too recommending we go ahead with this next year because we got a good contract and good bids.
Yes, sir.
That's fine.
Is this on our sidewalk? Yeah, uh, we're on, we're on, this amendment is where we are, and, uh, and so, uh, we've already voted on the amendment?
Yes.
Where are we, Ms. Whitby?
It's been read two times.
Okay.
There aren't any motions pending.
All right, let's read it.
It, it has been read two times, now we need a motion and a second.
I'm making motion, suspend rules, put them on the third reading.
Motion made, seconded, uh, place it on the third reading, on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Uh, any further, all right, go ahead and read it again.
This is an ordinance authorizing a change order for the city sidewalk program for the the 2003 sidewalk program, third and final reading.
On the question.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Let me make something clear, Alderman, uh, uh, you know, I've, and Mr. Smith is going through, uh, and I know, I think we see our sidewalk contractor out there, and I would agree, uh, you know, we've gone, what, two years, Tom? Uh, with the same price, and, uh, and, and are very pleased with the work. But I have, uh, have indicated to, to purchasing that it, I felt it was necessary for us to rebid that. We have had, uh, a request, uh, from another contractor, uh, that, uh, that that be bid, and, and that's certainly my practice, obviously this council has the authority to come in and, and address that. But, uh, Brooks has done, and is doing a very good job for us, so I, I, I don't have, uh, I don't have anything but praise for what he's done. But when a request is made, and, uh, and, uh, and bidding is something we normally do, uh, you know, unless this council should choose to act differently, I've instructed the, uh, uh, Public Works Department, uh, the Engineering Department through, uh, the Purchasing Department to advertise for, for bids.
Except for we just passed an ordinance that extended the bids. Where is it?
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Smith?
No, no.
Okay.
Mayor?
Just a second, I mean, all right, uh, we, uh, we finished the agenda?
No, sir, we still need to go back to communication number one.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we go on record, the council opposing this, uh, an illegal, uh, lodge, I guess lounge, rather, at 46 Leven East Broadway, and, and the city attorney suggested that we do this, and then he could check with the police department, see how many calls we've had in the past, of records of, of problems there, and he'll give that to us as we'll transmit it over to the ABC Board.
What, let me see if I can take that as a motion, that this council will instruct the city attorney to, uh, converse with the police department, and to draft a letter that, that I'd be happy to sign on behalf of the city attorney could sign, indicating, uh, assuming this council goes on record as opposing it, uh, and to state what we feel are appropriate reasons.
I must remind you, I believe I told you, it's May 11, you have fifteen days to file it, that means that Wednesday is the filing deadline.
And Mr. City Attorney and Mr. Police Chief, would y'all cut a, put together a letter, and I'll be happy to sign it, uh, assuming that the vote is, uh, to ask us to do this, and those are objections. Uh, on the motion, Ms. Whitby?
We need a second to Alderman Thomas's question.
Uh, I'll second that.
He can't second.
Second.
Miss Robinson seconded, I heard her.
Second, I said it.
She said it.
I just wanna see if he was listening, Alderman.
His right ear does not work.
On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
That concludes the agenda.
Any council member?
Mayor? Since my amendment failed on my 03-2 and 6 earlier, I'd like to see if the council would bring back up a reconsideration my ordinance as originally, uh, proposed.
He, he has, he has the right to do that.
Second.
Motion made, seconded for reconsideration, or, that's not reconsideration.
No, it's not reconsideration.
Let me just say, I'm gonna take this as a request by the council member, uh, to bring his back up for consideration, uh, and, and I'll be happy to honor that request. Ms. Whitby, uh, would you just, for purposes of putting it before us, read, uh, Alderman, uh, Height's, uh, resident, our ordinance?
It's 003-26.
This is the ordinance amending section number 83-26 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code in order to allow decorative banners on light poles in commercial zones.
And where were we when we, uh?
First reading.
Wait, that was a first reading?
First reading, all right, we're on first reading.
Move us to suspend the rules, place it on the second reading.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, suspend the rules, on the motion.
Gibson?
No.
Yildin?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Five to two.
Move us to suspend the rules, place it on the...
Yeah, uh, I'll vote yes this time.
This is the ordinance amending section number 83-26 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code in order to allow decorative banners on light poles in commercial zones.
What reading is this?
This is the second reading.
Second reading, okay.
Yes, sir.
Move us to suspend the rules, place it on the third reading.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, on the motion.
Gibson?
No.
Yildin?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor votes no this time, or doesn't vote.
Okay. This is a, no...
I'm not quite ready, I don't know, I don't know nothing about it, Mr. Height, so I'll be happy to do it. And we'll get, uh, we'll get our signed, our signed, or, uh, signed capital for the next time.
He's for it, so he'll be the sixth vote, it's not a problem.
All right, now your council member.
I've got an issue, I, I just wanna bring something back to our attention, and if we had a business that required four hundred...
Let me just clarify something, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
The mayor doesn't, did not vote no, he just didn't vote that time, which, same thing. All right, go ahead, Alderman.
We had a business that required four hundred police calls last year to that business, and eighteen hundred within about a three block area around it, we'd be real concerned, wouldn't we? We have one of them, it's called a bus station. I'm gonna pass these down to you, Mayor, because I think you'll find it interesting. That's the record of eighteen hundred and nine calls, and the four hundred directly at the bus station, eighteen hundred and nine. I know you're working on some areas down there, just add this to your list of, of supporting documents that will help us deal with that. It, it's not necessarily the, the bus station perhaps, it's the people that hang around it, but it is indeed a, a problem, and, uh, it's being a person who's downtown a lot, employees are bothered over at the administration building because people are just wandering around through the parking lot in their cars, so...
Microphone, I'm sorry. Microphone's open?
I have something.
I just...
Well, jump up here.
No, you go ahead.
I just, I just wanna see the representative of Code Enforcement before we leave.
All right. Mr. Sykes? Okay, oh, it's not Mr. Sykes. All right.
I'd just like to say, uh, you know, we need to put a lot of this stuff in perspective, we get to sit down here and talk about whether or not we're gonna have alcohol at a place, and hang banners from light poles and everything else, and we definitely need to think about the people that are fighting and dying for our right to do that, and, uh, that's probably the most important thing that anybody could do. And, uh, you know, we're, we might get all fired up over some banner hanging, but, you know, we're getting to talk about all this, and, and, uh, without them doing that, uh, it'd be a totally different world, and I just think everyone needs to remember that as we go on, and that's it.
I'd like to, I'd like to second that, because I, I don't know if you could imagine what it would be like not to be able to have the freedom that, uh, that we have to say what we wanna say, you know, to ask about, to even ask about banners. To ask if you can park on, if you can park with a meter downtown, or you can open your business every day. This is, the people that we're going to are absolute idiots. And, uh, uh, you just, you just can't imagine, uh, when you're on the ground, uh, what they're doing for us.
I think we all agree, and, uh, and, and the only thing I would add is, is, you know, it's unfortunate, they're not only fighting, but they're dying, and that, uh, that is, and, and being in prison, and, and I know that, that I can speak for this entire council, as well as this community, uh, in, uh, in expressing our one hundred percent support, uh, for our men and women in the military, and, uh, and the sacrifices that they're making, and that their families are making in our behalf.
And we haven't forgotten 9/11.
No, nor will we, thank you very much. Uh, microphone's open.
Let me add to that, I had a cousin that was killed in the Vietnam War. I'm in 4F because I've had polio. Wasn't, I didn't wanna go, they wouldn't let me do anything. I realize I may be getting tears in my eyes, but everybody, please remember to pray for those people over there. Even pray for the ones that are doing wrong, they can see the error of their ways. First, I'd like to say something to try to help the people of Humms Hardware out. I've traded with them ever since about 1964, when I was doing work for Mid State Tractor. They've come a long ways, and all they was asking to do was be able to expand their business. And I don't know if it's gonna hurt their income or not, I'm not in their business, but I think they ought to have an opportunity to expand. You look at the place up on, and I understand where you're coming from, ma'am, you look at the place up on Park Hill, I don't think the rental place should be up there, but it's there, and these people just wanna expand their business. I remember that it wasn't nothing down there, but I shouldn't word it this way, but I will, a shack. They remodeled it, they brought it up, if they move outside the city limits to do what they want to, how much revenue do we lose? Alderman Gibson may be able to answer that. I just feel that you should give them a chance to expand their business, because right now, it's hard times. Also, I'd like to make a comment about the alcohol that would be being served at the ballgames. There's a lot of churches unhappy with this. Whether they come forward with a petition or not to show their response that they're unhappy, I don't know. But I'd like, I don't know if y'all will answer these questions, how are you gonna check IDs? How are you gonna keep it away from the kids? What if someone gets out there and drinks too much? Modern drink can be okay, I'm assuming, but what if they drank too much? And what if some innocent kid suffers over it? The city's reaping the profits, am I correct, Mayor? Are y'all gonna get the profits from the sale? Okay, if that be the case, are you gonna be responsible for the damages? Thank you very much. And please remember to pray for the people over there, even for our enemies, pray for them. Thank you.
Mayor and council members, I would like to pick up what you ain't left off on Humms Hardware. I know them and traded with them when they was down on Washington Avenue. And I don't remember when that was, but I remember when they come out there, I remember when they built the first building, I remember when they added on to it, I remember when they bought, uh, South Side, where there was a little feed and seed, cleaned that up, that building was just about ready to fall in, it belonged to Scott's, uh, Seed and Feed, and, uh, on the other side was, uh, Grassby's Machine Shop. It was a building on the top of a building with a concrete floor in it, and it, it was held up by telephone poles on the, the bottom side, and they drove cars in on the top of it, and you could see cracks in the bottom of it. And the only thing that Humms has ever done out there is to try to improve their property. I go by there sometimes, three or four times a day, they got backhoes, tractors and stuff like that, but you don't see that stuff just pulling out there, tongue to tail, sideways stuff like that, that stuff, I have never seen it when it wasn't in an orderly fashion. Either on the parking lot beside of them, or over on the other side, I have never seen anything out of place out there. And I would encourage y'all to just, when you have time, just drive by there and look